Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 14th, 2014 at 6:00 PM. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Please call the roll.
Dito?
Here.
Eliasen?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Purso?
Here.
Lundberger?
Here.
Saginaw?
Here.
We have a question.
Thank you. Well, tonight, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by two students from Emmeline Cook, Maya Strabler, and Emma Phillips. If you would step forward and please follow them, please rise and follow them in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming this evening and for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have the certificate of appreciation for you. And I would like to say another word of congratulations. All right. Thank you. Tonight, we have several recognitions, and we will start out with a recognition and award from the W A C T E. I'd like to introduce Mary Beth Pettish. If you would come forward.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to represent the College of Education and Human Services and Dean Yale. I am the Field Experience Director. My name is Mary Beth Pettish, as Matthew said, and my job is to coordinate all the student teaching placements for the College of Education and Human Services. And that gives me the opportunity to work with hundreds and hundreds of teachers from the Fox Valley, from the service region that I work within, and a lot of various administrators, and certainly want to take the opportunity, as long as I have the microphone here, to show appreciation to all the teachers from this district and the administrators who support our program, because without you and providing your classrooms, we would not be able to license our budding educators. So I want to express my appreciation for that. The award I'm presenting tonight is actually a new award, and this award was developed by the Wisconsin Association for Colleges of Teacher Education, and the acronym is W A C T E. And this award is actually being offered by each institution that licenses teachers, so there's about 32 of us in the state that do that. And the title of this award is the Pre-Service Educator Mentor Award. And I think in the title, the operative word is mentor, and that is certainly what I'm going to focus on this evening. And I guess the cat's out of the bag, because it looks like we have the award recipient pictured up here on the screen so nicely. Is this the moment in time where I would ask the recipient to come forward? So if Nan Cutrell would please step forward or sit next to me, I guess. Some of the criteria for this award, I'd like to quote from the organization, because I think this will give you a good understanding of one of the reasons, or many of the reasons, why Nan was nominated. An outstanding educator who has demonstrated a sustained pattern of mentoring pre-service educators for at least five years, and you've certainly done that. Attributes such as the ability to model professional responsibility, demonstrate evidentiary assessment and effective classroom management, and the ability to nurture teacher candidates while developing their capacity to be leaders. I actually nominated Nan for this award, and this is a prestigious award, for all of her dedicated service over many years to our students and not just student teachers, but clinicians. She's mentored at least 18 students over the years of ours coming out of the English program or the elementary ed program, and most of this, I believe, was done at Perry Tipler Middle School, where she teaches language and literacy. I run an orientation seminar at least twice a year for the student teachers who start in the field, and I like to bring in professionals at that point in time to talk to the students about professional obligations, expectations, kind of the reality of teaching. And I asked several of my colleagues, who might I talk to, who might I ask to come to do this presentation? And Nan Cutrell's name came up immediately. So she has participated in orientation several times now and has talked to the students about her experiences as a teacher, as a cooperating teacher, and it's been wonderful to have her as part of that panel of professionals. Above and beyond bringing somebody in who has all that expertise, what I look for is someone who has passion. And certainly when Nan talks about her experiences and her profession and her mentoring, it's really all about the passion that she has for teaching. The other value-added piece is that Nan is a graduate of UW-Oshkosh three times over, so I do have to recognize that. But it's with great pleasure that I'm able to present this award, the Wisconsin Association for Colleges of Teacher Education Pre-Service Educator Mentor Award, presented to Nan Cutrell for 2014. Thank you.
Congratulations. Well deserved. Well, continuing with awards, 2014 Whitman Airport Writing Contest winners, we have Peter Maul.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present the Whitman Airport Writing Awards this evening. Special thanks to the Oshkosh Area School District, too, for allowing us to present this project, and also to Julie Mosher, especially for her coordination through the project. Before handing out the awards, I just wanted to give a little pep talk about Whitman Airport, if I will. First of all, we like to invite everybody out to the airport at some time, just to see what we've got out at the airport. You know, Whitman Airport is recognized worldwide as the home of the Experimental Aircraft Association and EAA Air Adventure flying in every year. But what a lot of people don't realize is that we're a thriving airport 365 days a year. We're the third busiest airport in the state, believe it or not, all without airline service. With the economic impact we provide to Winnebago County and the surrounding areas, there's 548 jobs at the airport that are attributed to the airport, 23.6 million in wages that are distributed on the airport, and $750,000 in tax revenue that comes from the airport to the city of Oshkosh and to the school district. So, as I said, all without airline service there, so we're pretty proud of that. And to incorporate this writing contest into the school district and get kids familiar with aviation and the airport, I think is pretty exciting for us. So without further ado, I'd like to present, start presenting these certificates, and each of the first-place winners will receive a certificate plus a $35 gift card they're choosing, whether they can shop wherever they like to do or download music, whatever they like to do these days, I'm not sure. And then the first-place winners get a $50 gift card plus their certificate. So first of all, in the fourth grade category, second place goes to Carson Johnson for his essay called "The Experience." Is Carson here?
Yep.
All right. There you are.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And in first place in the fourth grade division, Matthew Krasny. Matthew here?
Yep.
Very good. Congratulations. In the fifth grade category, second place goes to Emma Phillips for her essay of the airport writing contest. And first place in the fifth grade competition goes to Emma Bogenhagen. Her essay is titled "A New Experience." In the sixth grade, we had one entry. That was Olivia Ashton. Her essay is entitled "My EA Experience." Is Olivia here? There you are. And seventh grade category, rather, we had one winner, Lily Anderson. Her essay is entitled "Small Flight Brings Me Closer to the Earth." I should note that Lily has won first place in this category the last three years.
Wow.
Not here. Okay, we'll make sure she gets that, no problem. Okay, going on in eighth grade, we have a tie for second place, both, two people getting the same score. Bowen Ying for his essay "An Aerial Tour of America West." Oh, okay, we'll make sure he gets that one, too. And then also in second place is Aquela Burroidi. No? Guess my postage budget's just out the window. Just kidding, of course. First place in the eighth grade competition goes to Vincent Moro. And let's see, we have a second-place winner in the 10th grade category, Ellie Leifgren for her essay "My Dear Yellow Stripe Beauty." And last but not least, first place Rashid Kulabali for his essay "Family, Flight, and Love." And I believe you were also winner last year, too, as well, weren't you? And again, thank you to the Oshkosh Area School District for this opportunity, and I look forward to future events. Thank you.
We thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you.
All right. Well, as I often say to those who lead the pledge, I will now say to you, you are not required to stay for the rest of the meeting. You certainly can, if you like, but for those of you who wish to get your kids to bed at a decent hour, you might want to take this opportunity to vacate. All right. Next, we have Board Administrators' Reports, and the Board President Report. I will start out, actually, with yet another thank you, and this one actually goes to Emma Schunk and David Mathers. And we would like to thank both of them. Only one of them could be here this evening, but I'd like to thank Emma and David for their service on the Board of Education and the contributions they made to our discussions. Emma's a senior this year and will be leaving us for bigger and better things. David could not be with us this evening, but may be joining us again next year. And at this time, actually, I guess I would like to come forward and say that on behalf of the Board of Education...
Chase him down, Emma.
Actually, maybe we should do it here, so I can change camera angle. I'd like to present you with this plaque as a certificate of appreciation. Thank you very much. And I also thought we should present you with a set of Robert's Rules.
That's some exciting reading.
Yes, well, I hope to make that into a tradition, actually. Superintendent's Report.
Well, and I'm going to defer to Emma this evening for giving reports, and I understand that you are going to cross boundary lines and report on issues not only at North, but at West as well.
I am. All right, we'll start with North first. I would like to congratulate the Beverly Hillbillies Play Cast. It was actually really funny, enjoyable. A lot of kids took a step outside of their boundaries that they usually don't do and got involved in the play. Very entertaining to watch and very well-done, put on by them. We recently had our art show last week. We had, those are the clay and pottery that were displayed, and then if you walked up and down the hall, there was murals of all different artworks that were around school, which were pretty neat to see, and they're actually still up. I'd like to give a 25 years of service thank you to Ms. Alvarez, Mrs. Solm, and Mrs. Sasha Bedra. They've been with us for 25 years, and lucky to have all of them. And then, and also extend a thank you to our retired teachers who are retiring. We have Ms. Beatty, who's study hall teacher, and Mrs. Miller, who works in the Learning Lab. Good luck to them and whatever they have going on after they get to leave. And the Special Olympics, we had four people, students compete in the Olympics, and three out of the four of them have qualified for state, which was actually today. There's just a list of all the things that they performed at the Olympics, and it was cool to see all their smiling faces and happy after they won. Read Across America, we had a lot of our Spartans go out into the district and read to kids at the elementary level. It was a big hit, and I think the kids were pretty excited to get out of class to go read some easier books. And then we have Staff Appreciation Week that was put on by Student Council. Throughout the week, they had different things delivered to them, and then at the end of the week, it ended with a breakfast. And what's to come? Student Council this Saturday is having their annual spring cleanup day, going around the community, raking, digging up dirt, sometimes they paint. It all depends on what they're up to this year. I'd like to extend a good luck to the athletes as they continue in their seasons, and finals are coming up, so good luck to all students with that and their studies. And graduation, which is June 11th, 2014, will be held in Norris Fieldhouse at 7:00. I would also like to thank you guys for having me on the board. It's been a huge, huge impact on my life and helped me steer a direction where I'd like to go and hopefully continue impacting the lives of others in education. So I'd just like to thank you guys all for allowing me to come on the board, and it's really impacted me in a lot of positive ways. I guess we can go to Dave's now. So on behalf of Dave not being here, he's at a Badgers, Badger Boys seminar kind of thing. So I guess they have a new government agenda. Congratulations to their new officers and senators. The courtyard is working on its way to be complete, and it's something to look forward to. We have a bunch of committee sign-up weeks coming up soon. Morp turned out super great. A lot of kids had fun. I heard feedback from students at West that they really enjoyed it. Student Government and volunteers would like to extend a thank you for all the decorations and for all the students that attended. They collected over 2,000, or 2,250 units of blood this school year, and there's four Gallon grads, which are, gave a gallon of blood throughout their high school career, and they get to wear a...
Wow.
Yeah, they get to wear a tassel that's provided by the Red Cross, I believe, that they can wear at graduation. The courtyard F-wing is next to the lunchroom. It's been having multi-lay-down pathways and grass trimmed, and they're putting more funds towards their renovation. And I believe that is all for West. Yep.
Thank you.
Stand.
Yes, and I'm just going to wait till the screen. I believe Kim is pulling up the screen for the Superintendent's Good News Report for May 14th, and I believe it's coming shortly. And here it is. Congratulations, four OASD employees received recognition from the Wisconsin Council of Administrators of Special Services in April for outstanding service on behalf of special ed students. They include Matt Kremier, school psychologist at Merrill, Iris Jacobson, program support teacher at Oaklawn, Lakeside, Reed, and Washington Elementary, Kathy Huddleson, program support teacher at Oshkosh North in Merrill Middle and Elementary, and Jill Williams, transition teacher at Oshkosh North High School. Congratulations to all of these dedicated staff members. Because of you, Washington Elementary staff participated in a half-day retreat to recognize that they make a difference in the lives of students. Stacy Otto, a social worker and a Washington School alumni, presented to the staff the effects of trauma, resiliency, and filling students' invisible suitcases with connections and positivity. The OASD receives a literacy innovation award. The Oshkosh Area School District received a financial literacy innovation award, some $7,600. The funding represents the increased emphasis on, by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, to assist schools in implementing Wisconsin's model academic standards for personal financial literacy and to forge meaningful partnerships with school districts and community. Skills USA team competition at the state. This year, the Oshkosh North High School Skills USA team consisted of 24 students from both Oshkosh North High School and Merrill Middle School. The contest was hosted in Madison and had over 1,200 participants competing in some over 60 contests. The team came back with seven medals, one gold, three silver, and three bronze. Court Graydon Wright, 7th grader at Merrill Middle School student, repeated as the state champion in prepared speech. His gold medal performance from last year was great, but this year, he had a perfect score. Emily Leverance finished with a silver medal in rocketry, followed by a bronze medal performance by Alex Thay in the same category. At the high school level, Quentin Miller, a four-year club member, scored a silver medal in CNC machining, as well as silver medal in extemporaneous speech. These were Quentin's first medals at the state. Morgan Howman, a freshman, earned a bronze medal in culinary arts and also won a $1,000 scholarship for the Culinary Art Institute of New York, if she chooses to attend there. The last award, a bronze medal, was earned by the Community Service Project. The team of Kiana Coburn, Randy Stussy, and Anthony Wagenke built three neighborhood libraries for the city of Oshkosh, which will be placed in three parks this spring. They've been designing, building, and working on the project for the entire school year. They've been documenting their work and partaking with city meetings to obtain project approval and placement of those little libraries in parks. Thank you for the parents, teachers, community members, and businesses who help at the state level. Without their continued support of the program, the trip would not be possible. Smith Elementary Bike to School Day. Smith students rode their bikes to school on Wednesday, May 7th, for more exercise and healthy living. They welcomed Fang, Miss Oshkosh Clash, and athletes from Oshkosh North and West who came to help celebrate this special event. Tipler Middle School, the students and the family and consumer science classes have been using their creative skills to design, measure, layout, and produce their projects. Students were expected to demonstrate the following life-important skills: time management, that skills to Miss Lee Howe, time management, organization, and planning ahead. Generac has been announced as the new Lakeside partner. Lakeside Elementary School is excited to announce that their new education partner learning, PAL Partner, is Generac. The partnership will begin 2014-15 school year. Lakeside and Generac are currently making plans to make their partnership a strong success for next year and into the future. MiniSociety comes to Oakwood, 3rd graders, and from Ms. Segans, Ms. Mangans, and Mrs. Rochelle's class, learned about economics firsthand through a unit called MiniSociety. They became young entrepreneurs as they decided on a business, learned about scarcity, opportunity costs, advertising, and the ins and outs of running a successful business. A big thank you and special thanks to Davis Building LLC owners, Mike Davis and Jennifer Boussier. On Mother's Day, Davis Building supported Riverside students and their families with a donation of furniture and necessities, delivery included. Mr. Davis and Ms. Boussier's time, generosity, and compassion for helping youth in our community were greatly appreciated. A sincere thank you for that special assistance. Green Meadow Elementary School, the 5th graders hosted a biography fair on Friday, May 9th. The students have been learning about the important United States citizens who helped change our society through history. Each student chose one person to research in an effort to learn about their person's life. Students dressed up as that famous person and gave a speech about them. Oshkosh West students who were recognized for assistance, Rachel Gardner, a sophomore from Oshkosh West High School, received recognition from the Winnebago County Sheriff's Department for aiding the department during an emergency situation. She was recognized by Sheriff John Motz in front of community members and law enforcement officers on May 13, 2014. And lastly, you'll find the events of my participation in the last two-week period of many continued activities, both in the community and outside the community. That completes my report.
President DeJong. Thank you very much, Mr. Matt. From there, we go on to other reports. Are there other individuals who wish to report on a committee? Steve?
The Energy Committee met on Tuesday, the 13th. The energy usage rules were updated, and those will be starting the next school year. The website, we're going to be, the Energy Committee is going to be having a place on the website to allow the community to look at the amount of energy that has been used. We've been tracking this for a number of months now. In regards to that, even though we had this horrendous winter, one of the things that the Energy Committee has been trying to develop over the last couple of years is behavioral modification, changes in the way people deal with energy within our established, within our buildings. And going through this, yes, the heat was up, there's no real rocket science involved with that. It was cold this past winter. But what I did notice on here is that 10 schools consistently had less kilowatt hour watt usage. So within those 10 facilities, Jefferson, Lakeside, Merrill, Reed Elementary, Oaklawn Elementary, Roosevelt, South Park, Tipler Middle School, and Trager, Washington Elementary, and Webster Stanley, all consistently were using less kilowatt hours, watts, every month for this past year, which in my opinion, considering what we had coming up with this winter, was pretty cool. There's also going to be a call-out to the community. If anyone is interested in being a part of this committee, especially as a co-chair, our chairman, Ellen Lar, who has been the chair of this committee since 2009, is stepping down, and without her, this would have never, ever gotten off the ground. An amazing woman who has just been nose-to-the-grindstone for the last five years on this project. And if any committee members or community members are interested in being a part of this Energy Committee, please come forward, and we will consider putting you on that committee. That's pretty much it for her report.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Ellen has been on the committee and has really been spearheading that since 2009, doing a great job. Sorry to see her go. Other reports from other committees?
We might just want to add that the committee doesn't meet monthly. It meets about four times a year or so, and so it's, for those who are interested, that it's not like a monthly meeting. A quarterly meeting works well for that committee.
Minimal time invested, but you have a chance to make a lot of impact.
She certainly did.
She did.
Seeing no other reports, we will move on to tonight's workshops. The first is Strategic Planning Update, the executive team, and Beth Wyman. Beth?
Good evening. We're here today. I'm here today to, actually, I told them they should come up if there's any specific questions, but I'm sort of lead-off hitter for this report, and basically what we're going to do is we're going to go through the strategic plan and what have been the changes. I know it surprised me when I started looking at some of the information, that the first time you received a report on the strategic plan was back in August of 2013, so we have yet to be in this strategic plan a full year. So that's kind of, you know, that's kind of exciting going forward, that we've made as much progress as we have. One thing I want to point out for everyone is that the strategic plan is online. Every time we make a change, that strategic plan has changed in real time, and people can go ahead and look at the specifics that are behind this. Now, I'm going to be giving the big-picture overview, but there are a whole bunch of tasks and subtasks that are underneath each one of these. Basically, it has the task name, the priority, what it's listed, start and end dates, durations, who's responsible, and percent completion. Every time we make a change, that strategic plan has changed in real time. And people can go ahead and look at the specifics that are behind this. Now, I'm going to be giving the big picture overview, but there are a whole bunch of tasks and subtasks that are underneath each one of these. Basically, it has the task name, the priority, what it's listed, start and end dates, durations, who's responsible, and percent completion. The percent completions are calculated by taking the timeframe and how much we have completed. So if it's an overall priority and there's several action steps underneath it, the length of time is factored in on that as well. So that's just important to understand. Clearly, this is built around the five priorities. Priority one is supporting and recognizing the value of our quality teachers. Priority two, working together to achieve a common goal. Priority three, communication. Priority four, equity among schools. Priority five, team with groups in the community. It's also important to understand that the duration of this plan is really starting in the 2013-14 school year, and it's slated to go through the 2016-2017 school year. So it really is a three-year plan. Your administration prioritizes their work largely based upon this plan, which is why I think it's been so effective. Revisions and alterations are made actually weekly. We meet as an executive team and do that. Completion percentages are estimates. You know, one of the questions somebody asked us was, you know, how do you gauge a percent complete? Well, you know, we've taken six basic categories from 0, 10, 25, 50, 75, and 100. You know, we don't split hairs between a 75 and an 80 percent complete because these aren't that granular. It's just meant as an overview to say, how far are we down this road? We did add some additional tasks and subtasks to this, to the plan. Upon successful completion of the referendum, what it did is it opened up a whole can of additional tasks that are going to need to be accomplished, and we have since added those in. So the percents you're going to see here reflect the additional action steps that we put in here. So the first priority was supporting and recognizing the value of our quality teachers. You can see I have in there August of 2013, January of 2014, the last time I was in front of you, and May of 2014. So there's four goals around this priority. The first one was developing the employee recognition program. We went from 7% to 12 to 100. That task has been completed. And then the second goal was to develop a database model to compensate professional educators. We've been making steady progress, but you'll notice that that goal slid back. You know, we went from 5% to 83% to 60%. And that's because of one of two things. Often, it's because of the fact we've added some additional tasks, and you're working on those tasks. So you could go backwards on some of these things. Goal 1C, align funding, staffing, and resources to reduce non-teaching tasks. We've gone from 5% to 7% to 67%. Goal 1D, develop and implement an educator effectiveness system. We've gone from 69% to 38%, and then we've gone back up to 69% again. So the priority one completion sits at an overall estimate of about 68%, which is quite an improvement over the span of time. Now, some things that we added. Goal 1B, underneath that, we added an action step to develop an onsite clinic to reduce healthcare costs. And we fleshed out a few of the general tasks around that. Determining a location, creating a proposal and obtaining board approval, creating a communication plan, creating and opening the clinic. So that is one additional piece towards that goal. Goal 1C, another action step was continue to analyze busing service for optimal efficiency and customer satisfaction. That has been, you know, we made that big change this year and, you know, kind of went through a little bit of a rocky road. We've stabilized to some degree, but we want to go back and analyze the input of all of our stakeholders and say, okay, how's this going? What are some options to make this even better? And what would that be like? So we've laid out a series of six tasks to go along with that. Our intent is to present to you, I believe, in December, next December, for implementation of any recommended changes for the following school year. Clearly, we're well down the road for next school year already, and a lot of scheduling has already occurred. So we'd like to get some more data on that and analyze it. Priority two, there's four goals to that. Foster and grow citywide PTO. That is up to 48% complete from 35% just four months ago. Goal 2B, to develop a database quarterly feedback system for the board using data from internal stakeholders. We've gone from like 18% to 29% to 71%. Goal 2C is signing the community agreement. That was the first one that we hit out of the gate right away in August. That was 100% all the way. We've not slid back on that one. Goal 2D is redesign the board work sessions, so the board will receive more comprehensive information, more data information to make data-driven decisions. We started out pretty high on that one at 98%. We slid back a little bit to 56% because we added some components, and then now we're at 83%. So the priority two overall completion has gone from 41% up to 71%. Now, we did add a few things there to goal 2B. We did want to change, the action step remained the same, changing the processes based upon best practice standards, but we did add some tasks. The biggest focus here is evaluating our data processes. One thing I can tell you is we are probably three-quarters of our way through our transition to Infinite Campus. And we had a pretty good idea of what would happen as we transitioned through. We would identify a lot of practices that probably need to get changed and are not very good or very healthy for the organization. We have identified some of those practices. And we're slowly but surely cleaning those things up based upon the new tool and new capabilities. Now, that cleanup is going to continue. We had a meeting down the hall just today, and we talked about fees and how we're assessing fees. You're going to see no real fee changes for next year, but how we assess those fees will change because we're going to have better tools to allow parents to pay those fees and track those fees. So there's just, you really are opening up a can of worms. It's a good can of worms to get opened, and a lot of improvements will be made over the next 12 to 18 months. Goal 2D talks a little bit about redesigning the board work sessions. The action step did not change. That was leveraging the policy governance training opportunities. We did give a little bit more detail in the tasks. The first task was conduct a workshop meeting. That has not been scheduled yet, but we're working on doing that. Second task was identify resources used to provide professional development for the board. Third task was conduct a book read on main factors and focus areas that lead to improve student learning from a board's lens and perspective. The next task was to conduct PD opportunities for not only the administration, but the board and the CIA team. And lastly, participate in training on policy governance model and create an action plan specific around that task to allow for implementation of changes. So we just added some details there. The third priority is communication. You can see there that we have three goals, implementing a school messaging system. We've progressed largely due to the fact that we're moving down the road with Infinite Campus. Goal B is develop a communication plan that highlights our informations and accomplishments. We've made a little bit more progress since last January, and we've started to identify some artifacts that we're going to be using to promote the district. The third goal is to develop and implement a coordinated communication system. We've made some inroads there as well, largely due to our move to Infinite Campus. We see a lot of progress coming there in the next 12 months. So the overall priority completion for priority three is moved from 14% in January to 65% in May. Some of the things we've added, once again, that's all baked into the numbers. We did add an action step to create media kits to provide prospective families with updated information. The target for this is not just the open enrollment families, although that's certainly one of them, but it's also prospective families who are considering moving into the area, people who are, you know, looking up and down the valley for where should I buy a home. We originally did a really good job of telling our story, and then we didn't update it for a period of years, and now we've updated that again. And I think we have some fantastic materials and some things to really be proud of that I think will draw people into this area. And of course, we're making the changes in our website, creating a Y Oshkosh, you know, inside of our Y Oshkosh section and turning that into our, sort of a PR site for us. Priority four, equity among schools. Foray is to develop the three-year tech plan. We've progressed. The only reason that is not 100% complete is we're still awaiting DPI approval of the plan. I am not 100% sure they even have anybody approving those plans anymore. We talked about that a little bit. They no longer require three-year plans. We did it to, because it's the right thing to do, and it helps, helped us identify the priorities and needs for the referendum. But we do have that into the DPI, and we do anticipate that'll get approved. We've actually presented on our plan with their blessing on a couple of occasions, so it should go well. For B is establish a standard of practice in facilities and resources. We've made some minor progress there, from 39% to 46%. Goal 4C, develop and implement a student at risk plan. That has stayed steady at 54%. And goal 4D is develop and implement a response to intervention plan. That has also stayed steady. So this particular goal, we've moved from 56% in January to 60% in May. Priority five, there are several goals inside of priority five. Goal A talks about strengthening school-community partnerships. That's gone from 39% to 67%. Goal 5B has gone from 43% to 86%. Goal C, partnering with City, Winnebago County, UW, and Fox Valley Technical College. We've made some significant progress there, going from 6% last January to 27%. Goal 5D is ensuring that every student is college and career and lifelong learning ready. That's gone from 20% to 38%. Goal 5E, reversing the current trend on open enrollment. Part of that, that is a goal that actually we hit in a couple of spots. Part of those spots are hit in the communication section. Part of them are also hit here. So we've gone from 54% to 69%. Goal 5F is resolving the south side facility adequacy. You'll notice that, no surprise there, given the work you've been doing as a board lately, we've gone from 1% to 47% there, getting the information and the surveys in, and now the board's going to have some actions that you'll be considering. Goal 5G, develop a process to identify, design, fund, and establish one or more magnet schools. Now, that one, we have not moved on, which is not surprising. Remember, we can't move on all goals in the first year. So that's still sitting at 3%. And there's some other things that we need to deal with. So priority five has gone from 10% to 20% to 44%. And given the quantity of goals there, that, to me, is pretty impressive. Goal 5A is where we've added some action steps. One of the action steps we've added is supporting positive school climate and culture, leading to an effective learning environment. This gets at conducting an analysis of any behavior issues, elementary, middle, or high, meeting with building administrators, gather data, and develop recommendations for improvement. We've also added address students with refugee backgrounds and a series of tasks designed at meeting that need as well. We're trying to get out ahead of that. Goal 5A, we've added an action step, determine sustainable revenue source to accomplish the goal. We've applied for three grants, an elementary school counseling grant, a positive school climate grant, and a now-is-the-time Project Aware grant for substance abuse and mental health services. So that's designed to bring in some additional resources to deal with some of the needs that we're seeing. Goal 5D, we've added some action steps, increasing student achievement and literacy. Clearly, based upon our student achievement results, that's where we're lasering in and providing some additional focus. And 5E, we've added an action step to conduct a survey of open enrollment parents to determine input. That's something that several of you have asked on the board numerous times. Okay, we talk to people about why they leave, and also why do they come in? And we're working with, we have a great partnership with UW-Oshkosh, and we're going to have that survey data coming in shortly. So that'll give us a real, you know, we all think we know why that's occurring. We all know where they're going, but we don't have any solid data on that. So I will appreciate having that information so that we can target our efforts a little bit more specifically. Goal 5F, as you can see, we've added a lot of things to five. So the fact that we've made the progress while we've added all of these, to me, is pretty telling. We did not add an action step here. We're still seeking board approval for the south side facilities renovation. But we did add a few tasks in there, you know, working with the board to obtain approval for the Lakeside addition, hiring an appropriate firm, establishing the specifications, obtaining funding, and updating and redrawing the boundaries. That would have to occur again. It'd probably be a more minor redraw than even you had on the north side when you build Oaklawn, but it's about time we started making those adjustments based upon where students are currently living. So, in summary, we've made significant progress on all priorities. I think there's some reasons for this. Number one is board support and the fact that not only have you stayed focused on those action steps, because you've stayed focused as a board, that's allowed us as administration to stay focused on working on those action steps. So we've not gotten diverted, and we've had some pretty good success. The other thing we noticed the other day, we spent about three hours as an executive team updating and making the additions prior to this presentation. We noticed a lot of these were tied to the original ones that said, obtain funding source, that had 0%. Obtain funding source. So much of that was based upon the referendum. And the fact that we now have some resources to go ahead and tackle these, you can see what happens. We've made it almost instantaneous progress from last month to this month. And lastly, there's been a great deal of hard work on the part of the entire executive team. People have stayed incredibly focused. Believe me, it is not an easy thing, first thing in exec team on Mondays, to sit down and go, okay, let's uncork the strategic plan and see where we're at. But that discipline has, I think, kept it on our radar and kept us focused. So at this point, I guess I would open it up to any questions?
I had a question about G5E, which was put at 69%. I guess, to me, if we were at 50%, it would mean a net zero. You know, we'd had zero kids, you know, the number of kids going in, the number of kids going out would be at a zero, and that, to me, would be at 50%.
Right.
How do you, how do you put us at 69%? We've still got an out migration.
Right.
You know, until we get an in migration.
Yep.
I don't see us at 100.
Well, we don't have a task that says what the actual outcome is. I mean, really what that is, is it's the steps that we're taking to identify the situation and start to take steps to rectify it, we're about 69% of the way through doing that work. Now, you're right. We'll know we're successful on that particular goal when we...
By the outcome.
By the outcome. But that is not necessarily included in this. This is more of a project plan. But that's good input. We should probably put that in there as a specific measurable.
I think so, yeah.
As one of the action steps, which will probably take it back a little bit, but that's okay. That's okay. That's a really good suggestion. There's very few that have that. A lot of them are, you know, conducting the citywide PTO meetings and getting some of that done. It's either it happened or it didn't. This one has a metric we can tie it to. Good suggestion.
Thanks.
Hi. That's the other part of this, is the second, the layer that goes side by side to this or on top of this is the metrics piece. And so each one of these goals that have, there's either, they're either a completion goal where it's check off, it's done, or trying to meet a metric. And so in this case, it would be having zero or increasing. And that's the metric. And back in September, when we had the community agreement or the annual report, that was one of the metrics that we did report out on. And so this September, and actually coming up in June, I would be reporting out on some of the other metrics that are involved with the strategic plan.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
I first want to make a comment. I think it's commendable that the executive team has stayed so focused on the strategic plan.
Thank you.
So often, we hear criticisms of strategic planning, and sometimes when that phrase is mentioned, it's greeted by moans and groans, usually by people who have either participated in the process or they think they understand what the process might be. But to actually have a document that is a living, breathing document and not one that is merely put on a shelf and dusted off every three to five years, I think is commendable. So I want to thank you for that, the entire team. I do have a question. Back in August, before I was appointed to the board, I did attend the first session at, I believe it was at the convention center. And at that time, I had a question about goal G2D on redesigning board work sessions, provide comprehensive information in order to make data-driven decisions. And at that time, I believe the percentage was 98%. And I remember asking at the time where that number came from, and was told it was a formula. There are at least three things in life that I can think of that I don't believe we can have enough of. One is good communication. One is good chocolate. And one is strong professional development for staff.
I like a chocolate second.
In that order?
Not necessarily. But with this one, I still question this now that I've been appointed to the board and elected to the board. As I was listening to you tonight and listening on those other nights when the presentations have come to us, my sense is that this is truly a self-evaluation of progress on these goals by the team that is responsible for implementing them. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I would think so.
I did hear a reference to the one dealing with Lakeside, I think it was G5 something, in which there was polling of parents. I guess on G2B, I have a, maybe it's a suggestion, perhaps we should be asking the board how they feel, since we're the main stakeholder on that one, you know, where we think we are in terms of that. Because communication, which is really the information piece of that one... Because communication, which is really the, the information piece of that one, is, goes both ways. And so I'd like to see some input from the entire board at some point on where the board feels we are on that one. And then the addendum that you had on G two D, I don't remember if those were action steps or, or goals. I'm just curious as to where those came from because obviously they directly affect the board. And I'm just curious where, where those tasks and the action step came from, given that the board just recently participated in a self-evaluation. And I don't recall that any of the items up there were part of our self-evaluation. So I'm just looking to understand where these came from.
Well, the action step was in, in the first version of the, of the strategic plan when the board approved it. So that has not changed. All we did was we added some of the, the task components saying, okay, if this is actually going to occur, what are some tasks that should happen? And then we identified those five tasks that were in order with, with what the superintendent had intended working with the board. So they're kind of general tasks, you know. To your previous point, I would see the, the idea of getting some, some information from the board regarding the data-driven pieces, very similar to what Ms. Whedon have talked about, is putting some sort of a harder metric on some of those that then gets evaluated. You know, we can, we can certainly take a look at some of that. And we had some of that fleshed out several board meetings ago. They kicked off the whole data component, you know. The whole rework of our data system was kicked off at a board workshop, probably, I don't know, eighteen months, two years ago, when, when building after building came up and presented to the board about how they were currently tracking data. They were all doing it, but they were doing it in different silos. And we talked about fixing that process, so.
Well, I think professional development, as I said, is one of those areas where you can never get enough of it as long as it's good quality. I was just wondering what the source was for these since it didn't seem to emerge from the board's self-evaluation.
Right.
Dr. Grandlock had a question under the broad category three, communication, PR firm. Where are we in the process? Have we retained the firm or going through a search or, I was quite sure where we are on that.
We have. We've been, actually, we're using Blue Door Consulting right now, who has started to refresh some of the, the existing pieces that we had. They had a lot of the, the original graphics and components. And we brought them in and said, okay, we'd like to, we'd like to re-energize some of these documents again. We haven't done a ton of work. It's basically been around creating some of the artifacts so that we can have them ready for registration and also get them ready for Realtors and life, so.
So some of the things that we're working on, some of them are more immediate and some are for next year before open enrollment. So we are working on a brochure that we can share. But the thing that we're working on really hard right now is to really refresh our web pages and so that people can find them. Because right now, when you search Oshkosh area school district, we do not come up. So we are real, I mean, we can come up with Oshkosh area school district, but we want to be one of the main hits and why Oshkosh and really hit that out of the park.
If somebody searches for open enrollment-
Right.
And Oshkosh, we want to be the top hit. I mean, if you type in Oshkosh area school district in Google, we're the top hit.
Yes, you'll get that.
But if you type in, hey, I'm looking to do open enrollment and I, somewhere in the Fox Valley, well, I want us to come up number one.
Right. And so then we're also working on why Oshkosh, because right now we have a paragraph, but we're really trying to expand that to help families know the great things that we offer here in our educational system and also in the city.
And what parts of that are Blue Door doing for us? Is Blue Door doing this?
So we're doing that, so I'm writing up some of the background things and then I'm going to give that to Blue Door and they're going to do their magic and whatever you do out there in order to make Oshkosh open enrollment come up.
Okay.
They'll do some work with, with probably with some of the search engine companies and get, you know, get us put in. That'll be at a fee, of course, to the search engine companies. And then a lot of what they're doing is, is just designing the graphic pieces and components that we can then repackage. You know, we can put them on our website. We can have PDFs ready to go. If Realtors want to have information to put in packets, it'll look professional. It'll be all set and ready and be updated because we had some really good stuff. But you can tell when you look at it, I mean, some of the things don't even exist anymore, so.
And we have, have a preliminary product that we used and made sure that most of our real estate firms in the community already have in their hands. And they were excited to receive that and put it in their prospect folders that are, should be available for individuals who are looking for buying homes in the community. Other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Strategic Compensation Design Team update. Nolte, Moser, Brown, and Schnorr.
All right. Good evening, everyone. There we go. All right. Well, the first thing with the strategic comp we want to talk about is why are we doing this? Anytime we're making change, we always want to identify the why or the need that's involved with making the change. People have a, have a tendency to, you explain the why, understand it, and are more apt to accept it. Or if they don't have the why, then they become a lot of times frustrated, disgruntled, and that sort of thing. So why are we doing this? Well, first of all, I think we all agree that the traditional system that we currently have is definitely not affordable or sustainable going forward. The system of, of having steps that people automatically get and the system of taking graduate credits and being, being rewarded for graduate credits, even though it doesn't align with maybe the district initiatives and that sort of thing. And as Susan would, Susan would be able to tell us the numbers, it just flat out, is it, is it affordable going forward or sustainable? The other thing that, the other reason that we're definitely doing this is we definitely want to address the attrition that we've had in the first five years, if not first six, seven, eight, nine, ten years. And, and we, we did the study last August or September relative to why so many people left last year. And it indicated that salary was number one, followed by, I believe, family reasons and commute reasons as the top three. But relative to salary of our neighboring school districts, I, I have to point out that we are currently, right now, at thirty-three, four eighty-six or something like that is our starting salary. And just looking around us, we have, Manasha's looking to be thirty-eight-five, Appleton's over forty, Nina's over forty, just got something from Little Mayville, south of us, they're going to be over forty, Fondleaks can be at thirty-seven. So we definitely are lagging behind in our starting salary in the first few years. And the other thing is the traditional salary system, you know, it hasn't been reviewed for decades relative to, does it, does it meet the goals and values and beliefs of the district? And so given where we're at, this is a good time for us to be doing what we're doing.
Excuse me, that second data point is not one that is new. That's been around for decades. Traditionally, teachers have left the profession within the first five years if they leave at all. The difference or the twist that may be more unique today probably relates more to the salary issue as you're suggesting, particularly with students coming out of college with tens of thousands of dollars in debt. Whereas decades ago, when some of us around the table who were in education started our teaching careers, that was not the case. But the, the fact of people who leave the profession, doing so typically within the first five years is not a new phenomenon. And that's been around for decades.
Correct.
But the reason may be different today.
And the thing that I pointed out with that is, is that the study that we did last year, last August, September, very few of the people left the profession. They left the Oshkosh school district-
That's a different twist.
Yeah, different, rather school districts right now. I'm sure there were a few that became stay-home moms, I think there were one or two different career changes, stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
All right. We also want to recognize that the strategic comp project is part of, of the strategic plan and it's part of priority number one, support and recognize value of all our quality teachers by our community members. And action step B, to develop a data-based model to compensate our professional educators. And we are looking at September, we are looking at this following school, this next school year as potentially be up and running. Feeling much stronger about that than we were two months ago. We also want to just go back in time a little bit. We did, we had three firms going forward to help us, to help guide us. And as you're well aware, we did, we did select Batel for Kids and Tom Griffith was our consultant. Tom worked with us, the exec team, for a number of hours. He really wanted to get a pulse and he wanted to identify the culture of this district, structures and the strengths of this district. And his findings were that the culture of this district is very collaborative, which is very, very good because if you have professional development, people are collaborating around that, you have an increased probability of higher student achievement and professionals being more effective at what they're doing with best practice. We have plenty of structures in place to enhance student learning. Then we have our instructional support teachers, there are program support teachers, there are behavioral preventionists, we have a lot of pupil services staffs. We have a lot of structures in place that enhance student learning. And professional development is a strength of the district. And we're going to be coming back to that because when, once we've identified professional development, as, as Dr. Herzog would attest to here earlier, that, that is one of the key components relative to an educational system and its productivity. And so you'll see that what we're doing tonight is going to be really aligned to professional development.
And should improve student learning. That's, that's really the underlying.
That's the end result.
Why do we do it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. We ended up calling it the Explore and Design Team. And I want you to be aware that, that team is comprised of twenty-three members. We have fifteen educators and they were from all different levels, elementary, middle school, high school. We had pupil services and structural support. So we had a very diverse group. And the other thing I want to point out to you is that we invited all the educators in the district to become involved. Now granted, we could not have everybody involved because the team would have been way too large. But we did, but we did open up to everybody. We did have seven administrators, the four of us. And we also have, actually Jill and Jackie are here tonight. And by the way, a lot of us have talked, we have Amanda Portrat's here, John Ryland.
Jill Pascharella?
Yeah. I introduced them.
And Jackie Schlecker.
They're all on the team, the comp team, so they're here this evening. And Steve was, Steve has been with us, Steve Eliasen. And the next piece on there, you'll notice that the team members have contributed substantial time and hours to this project. There is no doubt, this is, this is one of the biggest projects that I have ever engaged in in my thirty-three years in this business. And there's been substantial hours put in by a lot of people.
Right. So one, one area that really attracted us to Batel for Kids as our consulting firm was that Batel for Kids had a national database and had access to national models when it came to compensation. And so as we worked with Tom Griffith and then we started to work with the Explore and Design Team, Batel for Kids had access and gave us access to compensation models from within the state and across the nation. And on the screen you can see, we looked at districts within Ohio, Oklahoma, Tennessee, Colorado, Texas, Wisconsin, all over the place. We were really looking for, we didn't want to just stay in Wisconsin. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at effective practices and models that were in play and or being developed across the nation and within the state of Wisconsin. So we did a pretty thorough search and a lot of reading to look at those different compensation models. The design team also examined and read research and articles around human capital in education. Because what makes education in school districts unique is that we are a people business. We're not producing, we're not manufacturing a product. We're working with human beings and our employees are human beings and the students that we're working with are young minds that we are, that we are molding and they're learning and they're growing. And so it's a human capital business. And when you look at any type of either private, nonprofit, public business that is based on human capital, over eighty percent of their budget is going to be spent on salaries and benefits because you're talking about people. And that was across the, that was across the nation. We then started looking at pay-for-performance models because pay-for-performance models are a hot topic and very, and are trending when you start to look at research across the country when it comes to school, school districts and compensation models. So we looked at pay-for-performance models and something called eligibility criteria. What does, how does some, how does a school district get into pay-for-performance models? What does it mean for employees that are in those types of models? And what does it mean for districts? And we did a lot of reading on that. And there are examples across the nation where it's being used successfully, some not successfully, some, there's not a lot of data back yet. But we need to, we need to note that pay-for-performance models across the nation hasn't been the majority of school districts. And research is just now coming out on those. We looked at teacher incentive compensation plans. And there's a difference between pay-for-performance and teacher incentive. Teacher incentive means you're being rewarded or awarded pay based on, on, on doing something or certain actions or certain behaviors, being innovative, starting up new programs, going above and beyond, meeting goals, et cetera. And so we looked at that. And then lastly, we looked at multiple measures for teacher development and evaluation. And more importantly, we looked at the recently released Measures of Effective Teaching, the MET study that looked at teacher evaluation and what really counts when it comes to improving student learning, because that's what we're really all about. And what are those measures and what, what is really showing growth in student learning? And does it correlate to pay? Does it correlate to compensation? And we had a lot of reading and a lot of discussion. And so if you ask the team and you start to look at the pages that they looked at, those forty-six hours that we may have met together doesn't actually show the hours that was spent in, in reading and research. But working for Batel for Kids was really key because it would have taken even more hours, additional times, tens, twenty, twenty-some hours to start to put that research together. So it was really easy access to their database and we appreciated that. The next piece was the results piece. So where did we go after we did all that research, after we did all that reading, after we looked at the model? So as we were, as we were looking at models, a model that resonated with the group was the Perrysburg, Ohio model and a model that is currently or just being implemented in Fall Creek, Wisconsin. And it gained the attention because those two models were focused on professional development. And if you recall from earlier in the slides, Batel for Kids had indicated that professional development was one of the strengths in the Oshkosh area school district. So it really resonated with us. So as we looked at other models that were listed up there and we were looking at the models nationally, other models were going, you know what, this isn't really fitting with what we believe when it comes to teaching and learning in the Oshkosh area school district. Because once again, we're, we're compensating individuals, we're looking at the things we do should be improving student learning. And so we disregarded or we set off to the side, whichever word you'd like to choose, strictly pay for performance. So here's your performance, here's your pay. We set that off to the side. Creates competitive versus collaborative culture. Once again, if you recall, one of the strengths or one of the things that they recognized in the Oshkosh area school district as we worked with Batel for Kids is that we have a very collaborative culture rather than a competitive culture. And so when we looked at compensation models, we put the competitive piece aside. The next piece was value-added data on student growth, not available in Wisconsin at, at this time. Actually, the University of Wisconsin-Madison is a value-added, FARC, value-added research collaborative, is actually in the University of Wisconsin-Madison. And value-added, you would think we would be pretty strong with that in the state of Wisconsin. And we are when it comes to WKCE and our current assessments that we have in there. We can put out value-added data. Value-added means when you, you adjust the playing field for, for demographics and you start to compare school districts that are alike and we start to put comparables together. Because a lot of times we'll go, we can't compare this student data with that student data because it's not apples to apples, would be an example. And when you put value-added pieces in there, it evens the playing field and you can start to do comparisons. Well, the state of Wisconsin is going to a whole new balanced assessment system coming up next year, including smarter balanced assessment in third through eighth grade and the ACT suites in ninth through eleventh. And you put that together, there's not data that's been collected statewide that can produce value-added. And so that being the piece, it's going to be very hard to introduce that into a compensation model because we don't have reliable value-added data at this time on student outcomes. And lastly, currently, we as the Oshkosh area school district have selected the DPI model for educator effectiveness. And the DPI model for educator effectiveness is the evaluation model that all professional educators are going to be using and mandated for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. And that's based on Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Teaching. And Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Teaching was never meant to be tied to compensation. It is, it has been proven in the MET study to be an effective evaluation of, of teachers saying this is, this is good teaching, this needs improvement. But it never was designed to be, to inform compensation. And so therefore, anything that had evaluation with it in the compensation- And so therefore, anything that had evaluation with it in the compensation model, we set off to the side.
In day three, our full day, we divided out into three groups. We had a school group, a business group, a salary structure group. And the school team further examined Ripon, Appleton, Fall Creek, Perrysburg, Ohio. And the reason they did that is because they had a strong component relative to professional development also in their compensation model. And that was exactly the direction that we were, at that time intending to go. The business team shared a couple of successful businesses focused on employee satisfaction productivity. And Steve led up that team. Do you want to share anything with that situation, Steve?
Perhaps what I would do is at the end of the presentation, sort of summarize, I would just say that two kind of prominent Milwaukee firms, I spent some time either with them at or, you know, via telephone. So I'd be happy to share that maybe, I feel like it's best to maybe wrap up with that.
Salary structure team looked at the following scenarios, increasing the base salary, which we've talked about a little bit earlier, condensing our current steps and lanes because that's not affordable and sustainable. And we're back to rewarding, continuous learning. We kind of kept coming back to if professional development is where we want to go, meaning we attract, we attract the talent and we grow the talent, we want to retain the talent. And how are we going to do that? Well, A, we want to grow that talent because we want that talent to be able to produce the most student achievement that we can produce. And in order to do that, we have to have quality professional learning. And we kept coming back to that. And if we're going to value that, how are we going to reward that in a salary structure is what, is where we were attempting to go. So the design team envisioned a professional salary system and, and these were the, these were kind of the standards, meaning that when we, when we're all said and done, is it going to, is the salary system going to weigh heavily on professional development? Yes or no? It should. Is it going to address the attrition in the first few years? Hopefully so. Does it have a financial vision? I mean, when somebody comes into the district and, and they're employed as their first year and they look at, look at the salary, the compensation system, does it give them a, a vision of where will I be in 20 years of my career? Where will I be at the end of my career relative to this compensation plan? Is it fairly easy to understand and manage? I mean, we don't want, we want something that's quite easy for our employees to understand and we want something that we can manage. We, we can't create something that is not doable relative to tracking the data. So, and we've talked about it being affordable and competitive with the state and the value. Is it sustainable? We've talked about that. And ultimately, at the end of the day, will it attract, recruit and retain the quality staff that we are employing?
Okay, so once we knew that professional development was where we were, we also knew that we needed to have guiding principles for our group as we move forward. So here are some of the guiding principles. The first one is professional evaluation will not be linked to the compensation model for purposes of varied pay increases. And that goes back to what Julie was saying, that both DPI and Charlotte Danielson have said this should not be used for that. Because really, the educator effectiveness model is really only meant to inform and improve teaching and learning. So the next one was the professional salary will not decrease. And that is, just like anywhere else in Wisconsin, nobody is decreasing their salary as they are creating this new model. Professional development is a key component for the growth of an organization. As you know, and as Dr. Herzog has said, that is something we all very much believe deeply in. Professional evaluation will be an eligibility requirement for entry into the compensation model. So in other words, we really need our, our teachers to even enter into it, have to be in good standing in what they're doing in the classroom. The foundation of the compensation system shall be a professional level-based salaries that are competitive with the value and state. And we know that's something that we need to take a deeper look at. And then finally, the compensation system must be transparent and easily understood.
I have a question on your first and fourth bullet points. First one, you know, Reid says that the evaluation will not be linked to the compensation model. But then in four, it states that the professional eligibility, evaluation will be an eligibility requirement.
It's a filter.
I'm confused by those two.
So if you would be on a plan of improvement, then you would not be looking at that. But we're not saying, you know, you have to be a certain score in order to get a certain pay.
Thank you.
So to continue with that, then what compensation model would those people be on? Would that be a different compensation model?
If you were on a plan of improvement, you would be redlined.
I don't know what that means.
You'd be frozen.
Frozen. Okay.
So when you come into the district, you're frozen? Because you just said that your professional evaluation will be, will, I mean, if you're a brand-new teacher out of school and you've never taught before, how are you going to determine whether or not they are?
Eligible.
Eligible.
Well, if you have a, if you have a satisfactory performance evaluation at the year of that one, then, then you are eligible to continue with the system. If you didn't, then you'd be going after an improvement plan and then of course you'd be, you'd be frozen going into year two. Or there's always the possibility of not moving to, of course. But, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So as long as your evaluations are positive, then you're, you stay in the system?
Right.
If they're not, then you're frozen? Or if it's really bad, then?
Yes.
Non-renewal. Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Are we really always in the system? It's just whether or not you are frozen from getting a possibility that raises? I think we're looking at two different things, listening to what you're saying.
Well, it says here that you're no longer eligible to be part of the system.
Eligible to move in the system.
Well, okay.
And maybe that's what we need to make clear, but my understanding is, we're all in that system, no matter where you are. I mean, you come in, you're on that, probably that bottom rung, depending what it looks like, you know, just like we are now. But we would freeze someone who doesn't meet the eligibility criteria of being subject to compensation.
So does that mean that everybody moves unless they have a negative? Okay.
That's going to be part of the professional development component.
Right. So those were our guiding principles.
That was my question. So I'm good.
Okay. Great. All right. So from a, a result of looking at the guiding principles and looking into the different models, the one that continually came forward is the one from Appleton. And so, you know, because of their professional development. So what we needed to do is really find out a little bit more about the Appleton model. So there was a subcommittee of people who, you know, sometimes Appleton representation came here. And then Julie and I also were able to visit there to see what that model looked like. So that we could answer additional questions and then move forward with what we were going to do in Ashkosh. And so that was very key as we continued.
And it was very interesting how, you know, we looked at all these different models throughout the nation. But when we looked at, we looked at Appleton, you know, 30 minutes away or whatever it is, and, and it just was such a good fit for us. And then we thought, well, if we can look at that framework, we'll see if that framework could work for us.
I know, that's, that's a hard one to swallow, you know?
But it was important, I think, as Julie said earlier, to look at all those other models to know what we really wanted.
Right.
So I don't think any of that was a waste of time. It helped us know what we didn't want and it helped us know what we were looking for.
And I think if we would not have done that, I don't think we would have been, I don't think we would have been at peace because we had been like, are we missing something?
And I mean, that's the key. If you go back to all of those, I mean, every single one of those school districts that was listed, we looked at every single one of those models in depth at, at what, and then also all of the research that was behind it. And, and it is, and that's why we made sure that we put that information out there because it's going to look like we didn't go and do all that research and we did. And it, it reminds me a little bit of the Wizard of Oz and Dorothy and it was, it was in us the whole time or it was right down the street. And, and it seems kind of, but you had to go on that journey in order to know it was there. And maybe that's probably not a good analogy, but anyway, we did go on the journey and we did look nationally. We really actually did that work, so.
And it was, you know, Appleton has been meeting as a group for a year and a half. And so we were really able to benefit from them when we did get to meet with them because there was some pieces that we hadn't done. And that actually, the next slide is really about our philosophy and belief statements. We learned very quickly that you had to have your belief statements in place before moving on with the model. And we had not done that as a group. And so this is the result of us doing our own belief statements with the group. And we have, OESD believes high-quality instruction is built upon collaboration that promotes professional growth to meet the educational needs of all students. Believe that high-quality instruction includes best practices which evolve as our understanding around student learning changes. We believe high-quality educators consistently utilize best practices to increase student engagement and achievement. We know that's what it's all about, is we really want to increase student engagement and achievement. We believe that high-quality educators strive to grow their professional capacity to meet the educational needs of all students. That purposeful professional development contributes to high-quality instruction. And then finally, we believe in the importance of individual and collective accountability for student growth. So with that in mind and knowing what our beliefs were, then we were able to move into our next part. And what we needed to do is we needed to figure out what were going to be the pillars. So with professional development was going to be our grounding and how we're going to move people on the pay scale, we needed to know, well, what's going to be accepted as that? So after a lot of time working through many different things, these are the four pillars. Effective instruction and assessment. And of course, that should absolutely be one because that is what, you know, why we are here and why we have our students going through. And that includes that differentiation. We know that that's a key for students to be engaged, is to have things differentiated for them. The use of assessment data is very key as well. And then of course, to enhance student learning through the teacher's knowledge in many of the things that we're working on currently. A next piece was the integrating technology. One of the things I want to highlight here is that we're using technology to strategically transform teaching and support learning. We're not bringing in technology and saying, okay, and now we're going to use this as the new worksheet or the new chalkboard or dry erase board. But we're really truly using it to transform what we are currently doing. The next one is disciplinary or content literacy. And the reason, or I'm just going to go in what that means because a lot of people are going, what is discipline, disciplinary literacy? And really what that is, is when we are using our literacy processes, and that can be the reading, the writing, the speaking, the listening, viewing and graphically representing, we're using those things in our content area, science, social studies, et cetera, in a very meaningful way. Because kids need to be doing those things across all disciplines. And then the final one is to support social and emotional growth. And as you know, we have students that all could use, and our teachers could also use some other ideas in what they can do to help support our students socially and emotionally. So those are the four learning pillars that our group has come up with.
And you're going to notice in the four learning pillars, you're going to notice alignment to the strategic plan.
Right.
You're going to notice alignment to the things that we, we know that we need to be working on in the Ashkosh area school district. There's, there's alignment with how teachers are writing their student learning outcome goals, how it's, how it's helping them move towards their professional development plans for licensure. Our goal is to get everything lined up so that we're pulling in, in the same direction. If you've ever played that four, that four-team tug-of-war, or that three-team tug-of-war, have you guys ever played that? Where the, you're pulling in all the different directions and for most of the time in the tug-of-war game, you don't move anywhere. But as soon as one team starts to move in the other direction and you're lining up the forces, you're all going to be starting to pull in the same direction. That's what we want to make sure that within the school district, we're lining up our strategic plan, we're lining up everything so that we are improving teaching and learning in the Ashkosh area school district.
And the collaboration that we are having around that too, I think, is really key. We have all of our support people, what we call our CIA people, which is our instructional support teachers and literacy support and program support and peer coaches. And we're bringing them into a large group and conversation so that we are all moving in the same direction. And we have a lot of leadership within the building to help make that happen.
And side note for the acronym junkies out there, CIA stands for curriculum instruction and assessment.
How about CCSS?
Common Core State Standards.
Give them another one.
We have that acronym chart for all of them.
Yeah.
So the next steps, when we started interviewing Appleton, they said they really gained momentum when they totally removed the money from the model. So instead of trying to have the conversations together, we totally removed them. We're not talking money, we're not talking steps and lanes. We totally put that to the side and we made a lot of progress on what the model is. And Julie had a great analogy about a game board. You can't develop the game board until you know what the rules are. And so we really worked on the rules before we worked on the game board. And so now we are ready to start working on the game board or the, or the matrix that'll be behind this model. And as we've been talking a lot about, it has to be affordable and sustainable. The current model, in round numbers, a step increase for all staff is anywhere between $900,000 and $1 million. Lane movement over time, now we haven't given lane movement for a while, but lane movement over time was estimated between $400,000 and $500,000. So you've got almost $1.5 million there alone with just steps and lanes without a benefits increase or WRS increase. And our revenue limit for this next year is only going up half a million dollars. So it doesn't take, you don't need to be a math expert to understand how that, how that's not sustainable for a system. And in an ideal world, if we didn't have revenue limits yet, we could be, we should be and could be giving those kind of increases to our professional educators, but with revenue limits in place, it's just not sustainable or affordable. So the matrix that we have to look at, that, that the steps might be smaller than that, but at least it'll be something that we can sustain and that people will have a vision of what the future holds. So that is, that is our big goal. And as we've talked about already, it includes professional development and leadership component. So in order to move through the schedule, you have to meet some professional development criteria that we've, that we're building in place. We're still talking a lot about how do we value advanced degrees and national board certification? So that's still a big part of the discussion that we are having. So the timeline is that our goal, the first board meeting in July is to come with another workshop when we will have all of this ironed out. And ideally, at the second board meeting in July, we'd have it here for approval. That's, that's kind of ideally. Then we would like to communicate the plan out to all professional educators. I mean, they're obviously, this is a public forum this evening, so they're getting a little hint of it. But we need to, to roll the plan out to them. And we need to move the, where they currently are on the matrix that we have now to the new matrix. So we'll spend a lot of time this summer doing that. And again, as we said, one of our guidings is that no one takes a step back. So everyone would have to be put forward on the new matrix and then implement a transition plan and an education plan. So those are our next steps.
And if I can add one, one thing here, as you, as you start to look at the next steps here, communication has been really tricky. And the, the reason being is, is that when you, when you start to communicate on something that's in draft form or that you're researching or that you're working on, when you communicate, you have to be careful about people grabbing onto sound bites or snippets and then carrying that forward as, well, this is the plan, this is what I heard, et cetera. And you, you start to cultivate misconceptions. And what we're really trying to do is find that right balance of how much do you, how much do you communicate and how can we be transparent without fostering misconceptions? Because the last thing we want is to, to start to communicate some of the research and some of the things that we're developing and we have in draft form. And anybody glomming onto that and saying, oh, this is what's happening. And then when the framework is actually approved and the model is out and they look at it and they go, well, wait a minute, back on May 14th, 2014, you said it was going to be this. Well, it really wasn't, that was the draft form, et cetera. So it's been a real challenge to figure out what to communicate and what not to communicate to make sure there's no misconceptions as you go through this, I mean, this creation process, this development process.
Another thing I'd like to add relative to advanced degrees and national board certification is there's substantial research behind the national board certification that it, that it does increase teacher effectiveness, which should have a high, high probability of increasing student achievement. Relative to advanced degrees, the research that we read through Batel for Kids and all that was that basically, your, the master's degree should be in your content area. If it's not in, at least in your content area, it's going to have a, a less probability of increasing student achievement. And, and as Dr. Herzog mentioned, at the end of the day, it's all about increasing student achievement through good practice, so.
A question. Did the district eliminate the compensation of, it used to be $68.50 per graduate credit for teachers? Is that going now?
Almost.
Almost.
There's some people that were still in, they've been grandfathered in because they had started their master programs. And so I've just gathered the name and there's like six that are still going to be going through it yet next year.
There seems to be a nationwide trend away from master's degrees, particularly for classroom teachers. But what I see on, on almost a daily basis is people who want more licenses. They don't necessarily want a degree, but they want more licenses. And I know it's beneficial to a school district when you have a physical education instructor who also has the adapted physical education license, particularly in this day and age with more and more integration of, or mainstreaming of special needs students. with more and more integration of, or mainstreaming of special needs students. Secondly, additional licenses provide some real benefits to school districts. For example, if you have a science teacher maybe who has a biology license and adds a chemistry license or adds a physics license, that may be more beneficial than someone adding a master's degree in something that is not directly related to the field. But it looks like from your list up there that those kinds of actions leading to more licenses would fit under the professional development component.
I said we'll make a note of that, too. Actually, the certification piece hasn't surfaced that, hasn't surfaced, so that's a good point, Barb. Thank you. Allison?
Maybe I'm shooting the gun again to getting one step ahead of myself, but what I'm hearing you guys say is professional development is the way that we get the most bang for our buck, that that's how we increase student achievement. And so we want a compensation model that I think what you're saying rewards that or incentivizes that. So the black and white me wants to know, how are you going to measure whether or not that's working? And is that part of the framework that we're not talking about yet? Okay, good enough.
Well, part of it, though, is that the professional development just can't be about anything. I mean, under deals, salaries, schedule structure, they could take three credits in anything, but they had to be pre-approved, but basically in anything. This professional development has to be around those pillars.
But so the worst-case scenario is we incentivize it, they go out and do the professional development and the student achievement doesn't go up. So that's the worst-case scenario. So I want to know, how do we then incentivize the right professional? And how do we know it's working and all of that? But maybe I'm jumping ahead.
Well, one of the things is that as we continue to mature with the Charlotte Danielson framework and continue to have our principles become very effective at coaching our educators and that professional development, and hopefully they're going to be able to work with those principles to the point that they can work with, or the principals can work with those teachers to bring them along.
And we have had those discussions in our group, is not just having the professional development, but proving that you are increasing student achievement with that. But we also have to weigh that with how much data collection can you do and how many people are we going to have to add to staff to manage this? So you have to kind of weigh how much work it is and how much data do you collect?
Sure.
That is one that we're struggling to figure out, Allison.
I'd like to go back to your guiding principles and the first one, which says professional evaluation will not be linked to compensation model for the purposes of varied pay increases. And I talked to Julie about this earlier today, and I guess I've been scribbling notes on here as you guys have been going along, but if I understand from bullet four, if somebody was, you used the word redlined, but on an improvement plan?
Yes.
They would be frozen at a given level, whatever that level might be. And I guess, how are you, how do you know who to reward or what, how do you decide how to even redline someone if you're not going to use their evaluation? To me, somewhere along the line, somebody's going to have to evaluate someone in order to determine whether or not they even want to be on probation or whether or not they're absolutely stellar. These two are linked. There's no way around it.
They're linked, but we are, we're being careful in how we're linking it. So it's linked as in it's just a filter, but we're not linking it to if you have overall a score of blank, then you get this much. If you have a score of this, you'd get this much. We're not doing that because we have not used, I mean, we've only gotten our first year in and using it. And again, it's really, it was Charlotte Danielson.
So you are going to use the Charlotte Danielson model to determine their, for evaluation?
For evaluation of teachers.
Which will then determine?
But not linked to the compensation. We're using it to help improve teaching and learning.
You have to be good standing on the evaluation. But if you get a five versus a six, that doesn't mean you get paid more money.
Then what evaluation do you use to determine whether or not someone is moving forward in the compensation model?
What did you say again?
I mean, at some point, you're going to have to determine, how do you know who it is that you want to reward for doing fantastic work versus who you don't?
So it's not really about rewarding because you're automatically in. The only people who would not be are the people who are not, they're not eligible because they are not doing well in the classroom. And so if you're saying, you know, are we using the Charlotte Danielson model? We're using it, but if you are having a lot of performance issues, we might go, wow, we just need to write a plan of improvement and figure out where you're going.
Everybody moves forward every year?
No. No. That's just the filter to know, can you be in the PD professional strategic, you know what I mean?
So what we're looking at is linking professional development to levels. And the professional development is linked to all the district initiatives and learning pillars. And if you do not do the professional development, then of course, you don't move in the system. And of course, we believe that professional development will lead to better practice and lead to more higher student achievement.
What if somebody improves student achievement and does not do professional development? They don't move. But the goal is student achievement.
Yeah, well, actually what we're doing is we're going to be looking at something like, so many district points per year of professional development. And if somebody over a three-year period does only X, then they are going to be put on a plan of improvement relative to professional learning, professional development.
Even if they're a stellar teacher and they really got it down as to art, as how to get this knowledge into the kid's head, if they don't do this professional development, they're not going to move.
That's what we've been talking about.
Why not link it to student achievement? And I know, I don't mean it the way everybody wants me to, you know, it's not the scary pay for performance, it's not what I'm talking about, but if at the end of the day, we're doing professional development so that we can have high student achievement, why on earth are we not linking compensation to student achievement? Like what we're saying, what if there is a stellar teacher that is doing great work and isn't doing professional development? Why penalize that person? And we have somebody who's doing a lot of professional development but isn't doing any better in the classroom. You know, I'm not sure that we, it seems like we're trying not to see that goal.
However, I think what we're talking about possibly is two extremes.
Okay.
You know, the high-flying person who doesn't believe he or she needs any more professional learning to the person who you can give all you can give to that person, but you know what, that was not a good hire from the get-go.
Oh, but maybe they, I mean, I guess I see that as at least a possibility. And it might not be that they, you know, refuse to do professional development so much as, you know, they're busy trying to be the best teacher they can and they're, you know, preparing their classes and...
Education is changing at such a fast rate right now and we're, you know, we're looking at some of that professional development, that they'd be able to take that in the summer. It's not going to take away from their teaching. It's also looking at, you know, that we have teachers who want to form other teams on other, in really, you know, set goals and do that collaboration. That would all be things that they could use as they are developing themselves. And perhaps they're looking at student work and, you know, what are you doing that I'm not doing and how can we improve together? So it's really getting back in that collaborative model and it is all about increasing student achievement.
And we believe, we believe we have a lot of great teachers, but we also believe we can always improve. We can always get a little bit better.
Emma?
What do you mean by like professional development? I guess it's like, what is your definition of that?
Okay, before we jump into this, a little while ago in the workshop, I talked about the balance between communication and right now, we're talking about like, we're talking about like hypotheticals or what-ifs, et cetera. And what I really want to avoid is miscommunication or misconceptions about things. I want to be very cautious about saying, this is what we're thinking, this is where we're going. And then when we roll out the actual model or the framework, it may, you know, I'm not explaining this very well, but I just want to caution us on the communication piece and not putting, you know, misconceptions or pieces out there. So, but going back to what Emma said about what could professional learning look like? Professional learning could look like workshops, seminars, collaborative groups, teachers collaboratively getting together, working on areas within the four pillars that they design and that they facilitate. I mean, there's many different options with that. And within our district, we're doing a lot of those options right now. But once again, we want to get focused and we want to get pulling towards a common goal because we know when we're focused and we're pulling towards common goals, that's when we're going to see improvement in student learning, when we're collectively working together.
Under the pillars, that first one, on effective instruction and assessment, the first bullet point talks about designing highly differentiated and engaging learning environments. Will that same concept be applied to professional development so that we can look at, for example, a competency-based model in, for example, if I've gone through conscious discipline training, do I need to go through another workshop in the district? Or can I somehow demonstrate my competency in some other way so that we're looking at not just seat time, so to speak, attending a workshop, although I know those are highly interactive, so seat time is not truly accurate, versus treating our educators as adult learners who are different from our K-12 learners?
We had a lot of discussion about that and we definitely want it to be differentiated and meeting the needs of what our educators need. So it's not that this entire school has to go to conscious discipline training because there's some people who have been using it and then there's other people who have not had the experience or the opportunity yet.
I think what's hard to understand here is, okay, so we're using the Danielson model to give feedback to our teachers so that they can improve.
Correct.
To improve growth. Yeah, and that's a good thing. And if I remember the Danielson model, somebody presented it, half of that is based on the teacher-student's performance and half of it is on what they're doing for professional development, correct?
Educator effectiveness or evaluation for professional educators is in two components. It's teacher practice and it's student outcomes. And so the teacher practice side uses Charlotte Danielson's framework for teaching and the four domains in order to evaluate that. And there are rubrics and critical attributes that you can measure and give educators feedback on to help them improve their practice. The other side is the student outcome side. And you're going to hear people talk about SLOs or student learning objectives or school-wide learning objectives. And by the way, as a district, we're going to have a district-wide learning objective. We'll be rolling that out to you, too. That is all going to be lined up. And that's the student outcome side with the data piece. But we need to keep in mind that on that student outcome side, if you remember, we talked about value-added data. Originally, in the educator effectiveness piece in the student outcome side, the state of Wisconsin had talked about putting in their state assessments or state value-added data. They can't do that right now and they're anticipating at the earliest a 2017 date to be able to do that. So the whole student outcome side is based on educators setting goals with their current students in the classroom. And so basically, pre-assessments, this is where our students are now, and then measuring their growth over time and at the end of the year saying, this is how the student has grown. So they're writing SMART goals, you know, specific, measurable, attainable.
Okay, so we apply that model and what I'm hearing you say is that if we don't see some growth in a particular teacher, we might redline them using that model. Is that right?
I would say if we identify deficiencies.
Yeah, okay.
And those deficiencies need to be corrected. That could happen.
Yeah, that could happen, okay.
But you're identifying and using the Charlotte Danielson model.
And, but that's okay because that's giving them feedback in what they need to grow in, right?
Right, correct.
That's how you use the model. Okay, so that's that component. I think what gets confusing now for everybody is, okay, so we're using this Charlotte Danielson's model to give feedback to our teachers on, you know, their student's performance and, you know, that other half of it, what you're talking about. And so we're trying to help them along here and become more effective teachers, right? That's the whole goal. Now, the next question is, they're doing that. I think, and what's kind of confusing is, okay, now, let's get back to the compensation model. How do we determine who gets what in terms of compensation? That's the question.
And that's what we're working on.
That's what you're working on. But we do know this. We don't want to tie it back too tightly to that, well, shouldn't be tied at all to that Danielson model.
Right.
Because that was never, that was never intended to be tied to a compensation model.
Correct. And as you, the Department of Public Instruction has said, educator effectiveness, when they started, when they put the statewide evaluation system in, was intended to grow professionals. It's for professional growth and feedback. And it was never intended to be tied to compensation.
But what I have heard you say tonight is that you are considering national board certification and master's degrees and our director of add-on licensure suggests maybe extra licensures.
I'm missed right now.
So those are things that are under consideration?
Yes.
Yep.
Anything else under consideration you want to talk about or do you want to just kind of keep a lid on it so we don't start rumors? Because I hear, I'm hearing you about that, you know?
I apologize, but I guess I'm getting confused as to what's really being presented tonight. If, I mean, to me, when we were talking about having you present a compensation model, I was assuming we were going to see the model that you're going to use to give compensation. And if it's not, you know, we're going to, we're going to evaluate teachers using the Charlotte Danielson model, but we're not going to evaluate them for compensation using that model, we're going to evaluate them for compensation with something else. And if I understand correctly, you're not presenting that tonight.
Not yet, because we're still working on that with the group. Because we started in November on this whole journey. And so I think it's actually a celebration that we are as far as we are since November in where we've come because the discussions are difficult. We have people who are everywhere. So we are moving and we are, we are very encouraged that we are going to be finished with it soon.
Okay, I guess I was expecting more tonight and so I'm a little discouraged. Sorry, I don't mean to, you know, degrade something that you've done, but I was hoping to see, I guess, the meat and the guts of it and I don't see that. And I'm going to be gone, actually, the second meeting in July, and I'm hoping that we're going to have something before then, since we're going to be asked to vote on it, the second meeting of July. At this point, that's, you know, that's only two months away and it's only, it's very few board meetings away. I think we're going to need that, sorry, in pretty short order in order to, in order to digest it. For myself, I certainly, I'm looking at some of these things and I, and I guess I'm trying to get a handle on what it is that's really being presented tonight. Sorry, go ahead, Steve.
I applaud your efforts. I've got my head around this. I think that for years and years and years, we have been, like as Dr. Herzog said, giving credit for things, for education, like you go to and get a master's degree or an advanced degree, and it is not necessarily directly applicable to what it is that we as a district value. I applaud the concept of creating the four pillars. I'm sure that you're going to be sitting there and fleshing that out with much more specificity on where the areas of professional development are going to be best used for what we as a district support. The idea of using the Danielson model as a filter, I got it. I applaud you on that, that we're not using the evaluation system and tying it to compensation, that we're not using just student achievement tied to compensation because everywhere across the nation, that has been shown to be a sham, where it causes school districts, teachers, administrators, everybody to essentially fall into place and try to make false statements on student... on student achievement. We can't do that with our kids. If what we're going to set here and do is compensate people by putting more effort into areas that we as a district collectively are all pulling in the same direction on, that this is what we want to do, I agree with what you're doing and thank you for your information. For me, I'm on board with this.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. I think what you presented tonight was some philosophical principles upon which the model will be built. And that's a necessary first step and I think they're really good ones. But one hypothetical question, if, if someone has some unfulfilled curiosity about what that next step might look like, would it behoove them to look at the Appleton model? To read it? Okay.
Interestingly enough, I got to add this to that, Dr. Oberg, is that if we, if we had the document, if we gave it to somebody, they would see the professional development component that Appleton has? They would not see at this point in time, unless I'm mistaken, any type of salary matrix. They're not even there and they've had.
So, they're not there yet either?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know too.
And that's after a year and a half.
After a year and a half, yes. And I think the reason we've been able to accelerate a little bit is, is they're plowing through it kind of like from scratch. We were able to take their framework, framework and see the fit for Oshkosh and I think that accelerated us a little bit.
I guess, Steve, I wasn't suggesting that we need to pay teachers based on test scores.
No, I never said that, man. I'm just saying what I got out of the workshop, I wasn't implying anything at all.
But it's good to know your, you know, what your philosophical framework is for this. And I think I like it.
So, reading Appleton's, I would gain, they, they don't have the, the heart of it developed either.
They don't have the salary matrix.
Salary piece.
Okay, they don't have the salary matrix, but they know how they're going to compensate people.
No, they know how, okay, when we, when we went through this, their piece of advice was, was to separate the salary matrix from the, from the, from the model. And so, think of the salary matrix as like your game board. So, if you want to do game, the game of life, if you so, if you so choose, so that's, that's the game board. But the, but the model or the framework that we're working on right now is how you move through that. And they didn't gain momentum until they separated the two. We accelerated our momentum because we said, we got to work on the salary matrix separate from the model that's going to have an employee or a professional, how they're going to move through that. And so, what you heard tonight was the philosoph, was the philosophy behind what that framework or that model is going to be and we're going to present the details of that in July, side by side with the salary matrix. And our goal would be to implement both of those in the fall of 2014. So, once again, it goes back to the details you heard and thank you, you heard the philosophy tonight is really what it was, but the devil's in the details and that's what we're, that's what we're working on and we don't want to have those misconceptions out there about what those details are. And that's what you're going to be presented in July.
Other than the salary matrix, does Appleton understand, I mean, take the numbers away?
Right.
Do they understand how they're going to relate a review to whether, how they're going to review someone?
They are current, their evaluation process, they chose the DPI model based on Charlotte Danielson's, that's their framework for teaching and that's going to be their evaluation.
But that's the one that's not going to be based, that's not going to deal with compensation.
Correct. And they, and they do not have their compensation model tied to evaluation either.
Emma? I'd just like to say that with the professional development and seeing all the pillars that you guys like have set up, I think that it's a huge like saying, well, what if it's, it doesn't work? But I really think that it will work because if you look at all these things that you're, like for your learning pillars, I mean, engaging learning environments and lessons and enhancing student learning and increasing teacher knowledge by doing those professional developments, the student achievement is only going to go up higher. And so, it literally is a big what if a professional doesn't, you know, none of this works out for them. I mean, teachers are essentially there for us. They want to make us the best we can be. That's what this is planning to do and it's only going to bring a student achievement higher and we need to like focus, I think, more on the positive of that versus, well, what if it doesn't work? Because I think that's a way too big of a what if. It's more of watch and see how well this works. And I think that this is awesome and I think that it's going to do really great things for teachers and students in learning environments and I just wanted to let you guys know that from being in school all the time.
Another question.
I just want to say, I think, I want to thank the group for the work you've done as I've listened to the presentation and reflected on it and your references to Appleton, that's been at this for roughly 18 months and this group has been at this for six months and you talked about the challenges of communication. And as of June 12th, 13th, the teaching group with whom you were partnering to develop this plan is basically gone and your main communication tool, I'm assuming, will be email. And so, I, I appreciate the challenge that the timing of this provides, given that you're looking to have something in place by the fall, have the board vote on it in July, but the teaching staff won't be around to maybe have, I don't know, focus groups, listening sessions, whatever, to unveil this in the summer before the board votes on it. So, I appreciate the challenge before you and the time that's gone into getting to this point, I think is critical. I just talked with a teacher this week about a professional development opportunity that she is trained to provide on a district-wide, statewide level. And she explained to me that she always starts with the underlying philosophy and goals and values and I think that's critical because without that kind of foundation, it, there's nothing there to guide the work, to help focus or direct the work. So, I appreciate the work that's been, been done here in setting the, the framework for the foundation on which to build through the pillars and the, the value statements. So, good luck.
How does this relate to the professional development plan for DPI licensure? You know, is that just a whole separate track or is there double dipping that could go on or what's, what's the deal with that?
There's, I would, I wouldn't call it double dipping, I would call it alignment.
Okay.
And so, we are.
Alignment, that's, I like that word better, yeah.
Yes.
That's what I meant to say.
We are, we are working really, we are working really hard because our teachers are at, are in an era of the highest level of accountability that, I mean, we've ever seen in education. And so, not only are they, are they, through PI 34, are they have to be licensed through a professional development plan that is set up with goals, that has to be reviewed by several different people, then within that, they're in the educator effectiveness project that has goals and student learning outcome goals aligned to that. Then we have school goals, we have district goals, we have all these layers of accountability. And so, the key is, is once again, lining this up so you can absolutely line up what you're doing within your professional development plan, your PDP, which is for your licensure, lining up with your, with your evaluation and your student learning outcome goals, line it up with what you're doing within your school building to improve student achievement and lining up with the district. And that's what we're encouraging everybody to do because once again, you want to be pulling all in the same direction. And the last thing we want is for a professional educator to say that they're working on 10 goals. If they ever say they're working on 10 goals, we're doing something wrong, okay? We all need to be pulling in that same direction. The other thing is that today, when we were talking in our design team, we talked about, well, what if this, what if that, and some of the questions that you're bringing up here tonight were, were brought up again today. And we need to keep in mind that when we design something to, in something that's innovative and that's going to push student learning and professional practices, that we design something for the best and the brightest and to encourage them and, and not designing something for the lowest common denominator.
Now, just my final comment, I applaud you for, for going the collaborative route instead of the competitive route. And unfortunately, the university isn't as enlightened in that sense. They, they've kind of held our feet to the fire to have a competitive merit plan and there are many of us that are not happy with that. And I, I think that discourages people from sharing and helping each other. So, I applaud you on the collaborative part.
The entire strategic design team has been fabulous. I mean, they have put in a lot of extra hours after school into the evening hours. So, it's that group too, that really needs to be celebrated and all of the work that they've done.
Kind of going off of you, Sam, I was thinking back here, I was glad to that we have a board, I believe, from the cleverness, as we look around the strategic team, there's 15 educators on it. And we, everybody working together, we, is partly why we've got this far also. I mean, these four, I know from the hours, they've put in plenty of different things, but I think as a group of 20-some people, it's partly how we got this far with the subgroups and just all the different ideas from whether it's an elementary, a special ed teacher, all those different levels. I think that's why we're going to find something that we think works. Will need tweaking in the future, absolutely, but I think it's the direction of the board to be collaborative that makes us want to be collaborative and continue these roads, so.
I, I had the opportunity today to listen to quite a number of superintendents and, from the CISA VI area and, and also heard the message very clearly from several other individuals at the same presentation that they're really talking about, basically, you know, the, the previous system lasted for 40 years and it was not the same when it ended as it was in the beginning and that we're really dealing with a, a total reform that year one will not be the way it will be in year six. And that there will be a transition period as we discover what works, what doesn't work and that the system that will eventually come to the board and to the, the community to observe will be a step one of a multiple step process that there is no, there is no system that presently has been developed in the state that is, is perfected and meets all the criteria and will be the same next year or the year after. It needs to be a transition from a, a system that matured over 40 years and, and now reinventing a new system at an instantaneous basis is not really possible.
Anything else? Anyone? All right, thank you very much. Number three, 4K program updates. Brown, Ashton?
All right, so we'll get right started and you're going to be really happy because this is a very short presentation. We just presented to you a couple of months ago and so this is truly just an update on the 4K program. So, since you're familiar with the program, we just wanted to reiterate, iterate some of the things that we're working on and how we kind of align with the rest of the district. You just heard a lot about the district initiatives and there are a lot of questions surrounding 4K and, and what we're doing in the classroom. So, we did want to just share again, we are a two-and-a-half hour day program, five days a week, with the exception of Head Start, which runs a little different to include meals and a little bit more of a holistic approach to supporting some of those families. But the 4K program is a play-based program that is offering a, a strong foundation in social and emotional development. And you heard, one of the strategic plan updates for five was that, that culture and climate of the school building. And we really feel like in 4K, we're laying the foundation for that. And that foundation, social, emotional development allows children to access learning opportunities, the pre-academic skills in 4K and absolutely the academic skills moving into the K-12 system is less than that we're working really hard to do. This year, we also have a literacy resource teacher that's working with us and we're working on weaving the developmentally appropriate pieces of the balanced literacy model into 4K, into some really meaningful learning opportunities for students and that's helping to kind of pull the district goal of literacy forward, starting from 4K and moving all the way up through 12th grade. So, we're excited about that. Our SLOs for 4K this year, we started with baseline, yep.
What does SLO mean, please?
Sure, the student learning outcome for just like the educator effectiveness piece. So, in 4K, we've got that too for our, for our program, just like a school building would. And we chose to align ours with literacy since that seemed to be the direction that the district was, was going as well. And it definitely was a need for us for professional development. So, we're excited to say that with our assessment online, we've had an, an awesome opportunity to really dig into data and what kids are doing it for and really help us learn where we need to grow in professional development. And we started with our PALS data, which was really the only baseline data that we had this year. And so, the goals were really focused on decoding, alphabet recognition, things like that. And the other goal was around retelling stories. So, as of February, our goal was set for one of them, that 85% of our 4K kiddos would know at least 11 uppercase letters. And right now, as of mid-February, we're at 66.36%. So, the biggest, the biggest growth that we see in 4K comes with that third checkpoint, so between February and the end of May. So, we're actually really excited about that 66.36% at that point and not just the road to memorization, but really weaving those meaningful experiences into the day. The other piece is the retelling, being able to retell a story and it weaves in the language piece and we know oral language is so important at the early childhood level and moving up into kindergarten and up into third grade, that that's one of the biggest indicators of literacy success. So, next year, our professional development is going to focus a lot on increasing oral language skills and language development in the classroom and focus on that in professional development to increase the student achievement and in all areas, social, emotional and in academic oral language. And we're, we're feeling really excited about that. So, that's where we're sitting as far as the professional development piece and what, what our focus has been this year, moving into next year. Yeah.
I remember, I don't remember when it was, because it's all blurring together, but I remember some talk about some social, emotional issues with the 4Kers. I think that was a couple of years ago. Are you able to see any data changes with that? And my assumption is that's why you've added the social, emotional development, but I wondered how that was going because I remember that was an issue, I think, a couple of years ago.
Absolutely. It's an increase, I think that the mental health and, and social, emotional development pieces is on an increase in need that we're seeing in the district, not in, in across the state and across the country, not just in 4K. So, the types of things that we're supporting children with, things like self-regulation, problem-solving and emotional IQ, those are things that we're definitely working on in 4K and intentionally teaching too. Our data right now, I just was looking at it before and I'm going to speak without it in front of me.
It's fine.
About 75% of our children were meeting age-level expectations for social and emotional development as of that winter checkpoint. So, what would be typically developmentally appropriate for four-year-olds, that's where they were at, 75% of them. And so, to compare it to the data from years past, we don't have the same data system right now. So, what will be really exciting now will be to, to look out next year and the following year and after three years of really good data, being able to say, okay, this is where four-year-olds in Oshkosh are kind of on average around all of our objectives for learning and definitely be able to see some significant patterns and hopefully see lots of increases in student achievement, so. Thanks. Yep.
Okay, and so we also want to thank you. We did hire a secretary for the 4K program and it has been absolutely fabulous. The communication to parents has been, it has increased and parents have noticed that they are getting an answer much faster and that they are being taken care of right away. So, we're very excited about that. We feel that there is more efficiency along the leadership team because we are not spending our time and energy doing those tasks. And then, of course, she is also tackling all those placements and that we are forever thankful for. So, going really, really well with the 4K secretary and just wanted to make sure that we shared that with you.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the enrollment for next year and sites for next year. Our current enrollment at this, to date, is about 440 students. That will increase to 650 in the next couple of months. They register all the way up through the first week of September and sometimes even beyond that. So, at this, at this moment, we are at about 440 students and we anticipate that the numbers will even out right around 650 students, which is exactly what we've had in the last three years. It really has been almost a consistent six, like right around 650. It has been like minus or plus 20 students. So, we've seen that in the last three years, which is why we've had conversations with 4K directors about sites. You know from the past that sites have been concerned about having low enrollment numbers and so we've talked with you in the past about making some changes for sites for next year so that numbers would be as, as similar as they can and fill to capacity so that sites have numbers that are, are what they believe would numbers that are what they believe would be best for their budget and for their financial being, especially if they're in a community site, but for all of our 4K sites. So for next year, we have 16 sites and 35 sessions, which differs from this year. This year, we had 19 sites and 39 sessions. So want to make that clear, that there is a change for next year for sites and enrollment. And if you go to the next slide, you'll be able to see our 4K sites for next year. We're working on contracts right now and those will be to you in the next two weeks. I want to talk a little bit next about ECHERS and EPCOT. These are two evaluation processes that we used this year. The ECHERS evaluation is an evaluation that's an environmental rating scale for 4K and early childhood programs. And the ECHERS scale is used nationwide. So this is not something that's just specific to Oshkosh or Wisconsin. It's used nationwide. I brought the lovely book with me so you could see. This tool is used by outside evaluators. So this year, we did have outside evaluators come in from childcare resource and referral. And when they came in to do the ECHERS evaluation, what they're looking for is what's going on in the classroom with environment, with materials, with the time of the day and how the day is structured and organized. So they have many different components that they analyze and then they come up with a rating system for each site. They give that information to the site as well as all of us. And then we are able to work with sites on a quality improvement plan. And so each of our sites going forward into next year has a quality improvement plan to increase their ECHERS scores. And really, we look at areas that were lowest areas for sites, so maybe they didn't have enough materials in the block section. And then they write a plan for how they'll improve that. So that is one of the resources that we use this year for evaluation purposes. We also did an EPCOT evaluation and this is our emergency preparedness team for the district. Our emergency preparedness team works with fire department, sheriff's department, as well as city and county resources. We have two administrators at our, in our principal, at the principal level that really run the EPCOT team and share with the district what the EPCOT team is discussing for the city and for our schools. And we have increased security measures at our schools in the last year or two. And our goal this year was to really look at 4K sites, understand where they're at with safety measures, and make sure that we put into plans for next year how to increase those safety measures. So things that were looked at were things like secure entrances, having a visitor check-in, making sure there's a director onsite at all times. So those are some of the measures, really to make sure that all of our 4K children are in the same boat as our K-12 system. So we have certain measures in place for K-12 and we really wanted to match that with 4K. That EPCOT evaluation was not an evaluation where we made a decision if they didn't have that this year, they were not going to be a site, that was not used that way. It was a measure used for improvement for next year. So you'll see that written into the contracts for next year, that the 4K sites have a safety and security section in their contract and they have an improvement plan to increase safety and security.
And so the safety and security is something new in the contracts. We wanted to highlight that today so that you knew what was different in the contracts moving forward to next year and then, or in the next couple of weeks. And then the stipend checks, it's still saying the same thing. It's just when I talked to Sue, she said, you know, you need to clean up the language in order to really mean what you were trying to say. So this is the cleaned-up language with the help of Sue Shinar. And that is all we have. What questions do you have?
Can I just ask, what three sites, how did you decide, if you didn't use the EPCOT, how did you decide which three sites to not utilize?
The ECHERS.
Oh, which is ECHERS, okay.
ECHERS was used unless the site determined by themselves.
Okay.
So, yep.
And then assuming that there were sites that needed to make improvements in safety as well as ECHERS, are they expected to then pay for all of those improvements or does the district reimburse or how do we?
As far as the locks on doors, that would be...
I'm thinking of cameras and stuff. How do we, they got to pay for all that?
Well, we're not forcing cameras right now.
Oh, okay.
We have locks on doors.
Okay.
Because some of them had five doors that were open all the way around.
Sure.
And you could come in any which way.
Okay.
So some of it was just make sure that we have locks on doors, that you were having somebody sign in, putting on a badge if they're staying to work.
So nothing financially intensive.
And we did talk with Stan about options, if that was something that we decided down the road, if we felt like, you know, security cameras, because that's what's in our school sites. If that's something down the road, we had talked with Stan about potential options for that, but that's not something we're requiring at this time.
Okay.
We wanted to make sure that the sites had an opportunity to correct themselves and work if they're in a leased facility with either the church board or the other government or other agency that they might have in order to bring it in. But the blatant issues that, and we should credit Kirby Schultz and Jay Jones, who took the time to respond, to do those evaluations across the district for all the sites. And that first level is simply do what we were doing before, we just had the locked front door with the camera, was secure your building so that people just can't wander in anywhere. And then have a sign-in procedure for operating and releasing. And as board members are aware, we had an incident this past year where an individual that should not have picked up a child, picked up a child, it all worked out fine. But in the end, that was a classic example of needing to have operating procedures that made sure that every one of those four-year-olds were most secure.
You got past me before I finished before, but that was okay?
Oh, here you go.
No, no, it wasn't that one. I was back in the what you're doing with the students. So that's the most exciting part for me. So I wanted to applaud you on using that pyramid model because that comes out of some pretty nice research in that.
You agree.
Yeah, yeah. That was pretty cool. I wanted to let you know, and you probably know this because you're, you know, this is what you do, that Madison has this wonderful center for investigating healthy minds. And they are working on this kindness curriculum. And I had the pleasure of meeting them a couple of weeks ago and they are, they would be thrilled to be supportive. So just giving you that tidbit.
That's great.
That they're doing some really fabulous work down there and they're open to supporting whatever you're trying to do with 4K. And throughout, really, their work goes up through fifth grade, but they're really focusing in on the little kids and they're doing some pretty neat stuff. So that's really cool. And I was thrilled that you had the importance of play in there because, you know, for the little ones, play is their work.
Absolutely.
You know, and I don't think we really focus in on that enough in education, that play is so important, not just for the little ones, but all through. I don't think we, any of us play enough in terms of development. But I wanted to just give you a little tidbit, and it might be my computer, but that link you have under the importance of play on the website.
Yes.
Doesn't open.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. We'll make sure to get that fixed.
Because I just wanted, you know, I wanted to see what you had there and I, that kind of stuff just really draws me in. And it could be that my computer, but just maybe check that link.
Certainly will. Thank you.
So that's really cool. That's all I have.
I also want to share with you, since you talked about the importance of play, something that Beth and I have been working with this year is starting to extend 4K and kindergarten teacher conversations with a very small group of teachers to talk about play and then curriculum and really expand beyond there, but where we've just started those conversations this year. And it's been quite exciting to see 4K teachers and kindergarten teachers sit together and have a discussion about play and other discussions as well. So social, emotional is the big start of those conversations, so we're excited.
Thanks.
I just want to thank you for the work you do in terms of this very important population in our community. And also commend you on providing good information in the major points in the report. I know it takes time to prepare these reports for the board, but I want to say, just speaking for myself, I appreciate having some detail in the major points, which I believe is also consistent with Board Policy 170, which talks about staff reports, executive summaries shall be used in order to generate conversation. And I think we've had good conversation tonight, actually around all three workshops. And I think part of that, again, goes back to my belief that you never have enough good communication, good chocolate, and good professional development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. I thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Next is a request for future agenda items. Mr. Dito.
This is going to be a little bit off of our normal situation here. I'll try to make it brief. I would like to see a resolution brought forward, which I would be willing to craft, condemning the kidnapping of 276 Nigerian schoolgirls by Boko Haram, the extreme Islamic fundamentalist group. The reason that I'd like to see this in our small-town agenda for the 28th of May is that as we press more into global awareness, create global academies, and introduce new technology that allows the students from this community to connect with similar educational environments across the planet, our role as quote-unquote leaders of education within this community should also expand accordingly to embrace the concept of involving ourselves with global situations. It is my personal opinion that if we do not lead by example in global involvement, how can our students expect that when we educate, take the concept of global awareness seriously? So I would be bringing a resolution forward for the 28th, which I will craft in regards to this.
I just had a question. I know that I had asked for the late, early start times to be on the agenda and they were originally going to be tonight. And then I saw they were moved to December 3rd. And I think I sent you an email about that. I just worry that the message that sends to the number of people that shared information around concern about that. I don't know if we can, I know summer is meant to be kind of not so busy and I know it's busy, but I just wondered if we could move that back somewhere out of respect for the people that have, want that discussed.
We can certainly reflect. At the time, with scheduling of specialists across the district, the division and dividing up of individuals that are shared between elementary and middle school had already been acted upon. The issue that we were also cautious about is not wanting to have an impulsive one-year-at-a-time jump in experimenting with what is really working. One of the things are high school, and I know you've talked to me about the issue regarding student athletes and after-school. One of the things both of our high school principals had done in working with their scheduling is to deal with creating the last hour for those who are student athletes to be physical education so that academic core, academic courses are not going to be missed, that if at all possible, those students will be assigned in missing one form of physical action for another physical action makes a lot of sense. And so the accommodation in having any harm come to academics has been mollified.
Yeah. And some of the concerns that came to me, which I also shared all that data with you, were around middle school and elementary siblings being dropped off and standing outside in the cold because one building's open, the other building's not. And just some, and some special ed concerns too. So, I mean, I just am trying to support the people that are, that share the concerns and they want a discussion. So I wasn't asking that anything really be done, but that it be explored and given some airtime.
Yeah. And we're continuing to work with our contractor on refining some of those issues because they're clearly issues in the, there have been eight times where it's the most difficult and that's our early release Wednesdays. And that's part of an adjustment that's being made also to remediate that situation. And we'll work to see what we can do as a mid-course discussion on the issue.
Sure. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Other agenda items? Harv?
I don't know if it would be an agenda item necessarily or a written report, but we heard reference at one point tonight to Infinite Campus. And I believe it would be good to review at some time. And again, that could be a written report or a staff report, depending on the will of the board. To give us an update on that implementation, including the costs involved, software, hardware, training, consultants, I know that had been a controversial topic at the state level in terms of student information system. And as good stewards of the dollars that this community invests, I think we should take a look at the cost of implementation of that program.
If we had it as a written report, but then brought it forward to answer questions, that would be...
Could be done that way. Sure.
Is that some music there? All right. Sheri, you've got that down? All right. Anything else under future agenda items? Announcements? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. For the purposes of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under 19.851(c) Wisconsin State Statutes Employment Consideration Administrator Salary and two, contemplated closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851 F and G. For the purpose of considering, discussing, deliberating, and taking action as appropriate regarding a complaint from a parent of a student, which may involve consideration of confidential people records as defined in Wisconsin State Statute 118.125, or medical personnel or disciplinary history of the student, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the student. And for purposes of conferring with legal counsel who is referring, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation on this complaint in which the district is or is likely to become involved.
So move.
Second.
Please call her on.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye.
Aye.
Alasen, aye.
Aye.
Connor, aye.
Aye.
Curzon, aye.
Aye.
Undergo, aye.
Aye.
Sagadetan, aye.
Aye.
Greenhorn, aye.
Aye.
Please stand adjourned for, adjourned to executive session. I'll take five minutes.